Okay, 606, I'm calling the meeting to order for May 19th, 2015. Additions and deletions, we have none. Citizen comments? Mr. Brown?
Well, I had hoped that I would have more definitive information for you following the legislative session, which as you probably heard blasted into near Sunday. But I figured in two more weeks it'll be old news, so I'll put together what I know. There were three bills under consideration as it relates to EC Fiber and Woodstock. One dealt with the ownership of any conduit. Of course, that's near and dear to our hearts here in Woodstock. The other one was the telecom bill that we preaddressed in our town meeting in March. And the other one was the rules and regulations regarding make-ready. That is, how long a utility could take to make poles ready for another provider. And those three bills, and I'll take them individually. The conduit bill went down in flames because a legacy telecom company that will not be named had all their lobbyists out to argue that that would be harmful to their business model. So it was suggested that we not press that, and we dropped that one. So no activities has taken place on the conduit issue. The make-ready issue was perhaps more widely discussed because it involved the Public Service Board. And just the background to that is that the state law requires that whoever owns the poles has a certain amount of time to make them ready for somebody else. And they've been dragging their feet on that. So sometimes it takes as long as 18 months to get a permit for a pole, which is really, really difficult for EC Fiber because we have to plonk our money down when we make the application, and we can't turn on the cash machine, that is, getting revenue from subscribers until they get hooked up. So all during that time, we have to be paying interest or whatever on the money, and there's nothing we can do except sit there and wait. And, well, there is one remedy. Remedy is you can appeal to the Public Service Board, and then that's an automatic six-month review process. So you really don't want to do that, right? There is a slight good side of that because in all the moving about of the Vermont Telecommunications Authority, which goes out of business next month, Jim Porter from the Public Service Board is basically going to be responsible for the make-ready process. And he's turned out to be a friend of EC Fiber, and we hope that he will put some teeth in the law that already exists that they act promptly on the make-ready. Finally, the telecom bill that you voted on in town meeting almost died. And for somebody like me who's not quite familiar with the legislative process, how you take bills and take them apart and put pieces in other bills that are completely unrelated, and then stick pieces in some other bill that doesn't have anything to do with it, somehow the language for our bill regarding the telecommunications district survived. So we're very happy about that, and there were a great many people who worked on that happening, including our representative Allison Clarkson and many other people. What's somewhat amusing is that while we introduced the telecommunications authority as a municipal utility district, ultimately it came out of the legislature as a communication union district, better known as a CUD. So they didn't like the mud. They didn't like the tug. It came out as a CUD. I'm most interested in the language that survived. It's really Vermont, whether you want to call it mud or CUD. So either way, so that's how that worked out. So we're anxious to get going. The fact that the communication unit district exists now may require the Select Board to acknowledge that it is one and the same as the thing we voted on in town meeting. The language is identical, it's just the terminology is different. That's the only thing that we see perhaps coming back to you for. But the important part is it allows EC Fiber to attract institutional investors. And we figured out that at the rate that we've been going, although we're extremely grateful to the people who contributed so far, it's going to take another 18 years to get enough money to complete the project unless we can start getting money in increments of millions of dollars instead of thousands of dollars. So if we could get $40 million some way, then we could wrap up the project quite quickly. So that with everything going on, I think it was a successful legislative session. Hopefully you'll have a more formal report in the future. There is one bright spot locally, and that is on Monday we launched our preregistration campaign for South Woodstock. Because Woodstock did raise, South Woodstock did raise the money necessary to extend the network, we are preregistering people, and what that's going to do is it's going to help us plan the actual roads that we go down, how we spend our money. We have an agreement with the South Woodstock Country Store to set up a hub there and to invite people to branch out from there. So where we go will a lot depend on the preregistration campaign, so that's going to happen this summer while the state is doing whatever they do, whatever speed the state does. I don't have to tell you all about that, so, okay? That's the report.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
It's a lot in a short period of time. Any other citizen comments? Okay, we will go on to old business meeting with an investment banker rescheduled? We can do that one for June 9th. That's just a...
How is this June 9th for your schedules?
Which is a...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's the week before your regularly scheduled June meeting.
What time will that meeting be?
What do we think, 6:30 if the trust starts at 7?
Yes, yes, that's what we had talked about before.
It's okay with me.
Good, great.
Good, good, good. Okay, so I'm going to jump ahead a little if Charlie doesn't mind, because we have a room full of some wonderful people. Going to new business, I'm going to go down to D for the Tassville Solar Farm, seeing as we have an audience that might like to go forward. So we have, would anyone like to speak?
Sure.
Sure. And then we can...
I'm Reed Richardson. I live on the end of Butternut Lane, and I am on a butter along with several other neighbors in the group here of the proposed solar project that's being proposed by Tri-Land Partners by a gentleman named Tom Garden, several couple of you. Well, most of us were in the room two weeks ago. Interesting video to review if you would like to. The proposal is for a, initially for a 500-kilowatt installation of solar panels in the field known as the Spooner Field, which is directly behind anything printed, and the butts, the Fransons on the other side, and myself, and...
And cemetery.
And the cemetery, behind the cemetery, et cetera. And it's accessed by the cemetery. Is it the cemetery the right-of-way?
No.
Or the cemetery has the right-of-way?
Probably.
Okay. It's accessed by the cemetery anyways. So the company has an initial plan to put a 500-kilowatt system in, and then assuming everything goes well, they want to put in a second 500-kilowatt system. And each 500-kilowatt unit would have approximately 2,100 or 2,200 panels associated with it over this 15-acre parcel. And it's our understanding that in the state of Vermont, if you apply for a permit through the Public Service Board to install a solar installation in the 500-kilowatt or less size, you're permitted an expediated process. There's less restrictions, and you can get to work faster on building this. However, it's quite apparent that this company slash individual, their end goal is really a one-megawatt system. So it's really two systems disguised as, well, it's one system disguised as two separate systems. And we have a long list of concerns, and if you'd allow me to elaborate on some of them. We have water issues, which I hope Bruce Franson will speak about. We're in a historic district. There's lots of natural wildlife and plant life in that field. It is a wetland or a Class III wetland. We have a burial ground, a cemetery, that abuts this property. I wonder what not-yet-deceased individuals would think of their plot and what they're going to overlook in the coming future. As I, it's, the land is a wetland, and water is a huge issue, so we're concerned about what the impacts of any flooding in the future would bring, such as another Irene. There are, the developer made several inaccurate statements, which were certainly misrepresenting and misleading, particularly around the size of the system and his plans, you know, continually referencing it as just a small 500-kilowatt system, but also continually talking about how in the future we want to make it twice as big. And on the video, there was even discussion of, so the two systems would be 4,400 panels. There was even discussion of 9,000 panels being thrown out, which is, that sounds like two megawatts to me. There was, you know, the guy misrepresented his conversations with the butters prior to the meeting and saying that all of the butters were approving. And I had a conversation with him, and it was very bland, and he was basically asking me how I felt about solar. I like solar. I think it's a great idea. There's lots of installations that are appropriate for their location and appropriate to the local aesthetic, and we don't feel that this meets that criteria. And then lastly, the state of Vermont also says that if you are going to install a 500-kilowatt system, it needs to have one access. However, if you're going to add on an additional 500-kilowatt system, it needs its own access. So the property is parallel to Route 4, and it has access by the cemetery, but then the other access is off the end of Butternut Lane, which is a dead-end street, very residential, very quiet, very peaceful. I live on the end of it. I can open the door and tell my girls to go outside and play. And we don't want to see heavy trucks come through there. We don't want to see all of the infrastructure that has to be involved in it. And then we have a small bridge on our street, too. And what is the capacity of that bridge? I mean, Phil, you might be able to answer that question. So what we would really like from the Select Board is for you to form an opinion on this proposal, and if you, we would really like you to agree with us that this is an out-of-place system, poorly cited, too commercial for the area. And we'd like you to share your voice with Mr. Garden. We'd like you to share your voice with the Public Service Board. We're currently in a 45-day comment period right now, and this would be an appropriate time to share your voice with Mr. Garden. And coming up, there's an opportunity to file a motion to intervene with the Public Service Board and officially have your voice heard. I understand it's a very contentious issue, but we'd love your support. And if Bruce, you'd like to say something, and Charlie, you'd like to say something, it would be great.
Bruce, resident of Tassville, Darlene and I own land that's a major butter to the solar farm, and what I want to address are the water concerns. And we've had water concerns, and they're the town's water concerns, as Phil Swanson can...
A lot of guys...
And, you know, like I said to Tom that night, you know, just check the town records, just check the court records, and see what the two of us have been involved with since we bought the house in 1991. It's just incredible. We bought the land, just a brief history, I won't be long. We bought the land from Askoma Bank and the water issues, the water problems, back in 1997. So their headache became our headache. And we promised the town two things, that we would remove a 500-foot dirt road, and we would remove a subdivision. And I'll never forget, you know, again, the meetings we had to go to, you know, just to prove our point, and how steadfast the town was to make sure that in removing a road now, that we did it right. I mean, there were inspections before, there were inspections during the removal, there were inspections after the removal. And we had the best people, as you know, we had the best people working at it. We had John Bruno, which the town has used many, many times over the decades. We had Gurney Brothers. And yet, even with those folks working for us, folks that have worked for the town, how steadfast you folks were to make sure that the removal of a road, the impact the water had on that, on that community, was done right. And that's all we're asking here, that with this project, what I consider to be an industrial project in a residential zone, if it's going to happen, make sure it's done right. Make sure the i's are dotted, make sure the t's are crossed, you know, back us up on this.
So I'm Charlie Wilson, so I agree with everything that's been said so far, and if you want a little, read a little history of Tassville's contribution to renewable energy over the last 200 years, Thursday in the Standard, assuming they put the Historically Speaking article in, you can read about it. So I'm going to go a little beyond just the local issue, and I mean, I agree with all this. This project runs the entire back of that cemetery, and it is absolutely a death knell for that. The entire cemetery is going to be looking at the backside of these 10-foot-high panel structures. So the impact on the cemetery, which is part of the historic district, will be, I mean, absolutely, absolutely devastating. But from a bigger standpoint, just this whole process right now, and we had a meeting last week, and we had another resident who's not here now, who spoke very passionately and very eloquently about Vermont's governance and the history of it, and how it bottoms up, it always has been, it starts at the community, the village, the town, right here in the Select Board. Representatives are elected, you know, they're sent up, and the governance goes from the bottom up. And Act 248, which is what's guiding this whole solar thing, has turned that upside down. It's now, it's top-down. I sit on the Development Review Board, we don't even get to look at this. There is no, there is, and if we did, it would be thrown out because it's a commercial development on residential property. But the town has no say, no say. The developer has to say. The developer goes in and says, "I like that property. I want to develop it." And this is a commercial development. The town of Rutland was so upset by this process that they started a petition. I know 50-some towns, probably more, had signed it. Rutland, for God's sakes. If there's anyone from Rutland here, I don't want to offend them, but I mean, if Rutland is upset about development, that should make everybody sit up in their chairs. But this was, they're having this problem in Rutland, it's happening all over the state. And, I mean, these decisions on where, and nobody's against solar, we would love to have a community, community, not commercial, community solar farm in Tassville. But the decision should be made here, not just by the Public Service Board. And I mean, the way I see a decision like this made is where the Regional Planning Commission works with their towns and says, "Okay, we've got to develop solar, so what's a smart way to do it?" And the smart way isn't to have a developer come in and say, "I like that field, I'm going to develop that." Doesn't matter if it's in a historic district, doesn't matter if it's residential property. And the town has no say. It just happens. It goes right to the Public Service Board, and they have so far declined exactly zero solar projects. That's how many they have declined. It's a rubber stamp. If it gets to them and gets to that approval point, it's going to be approved. So we'd really like to get the control back where it belongs, and that's locally. And I believe the town, you know, we can do solar, we can do solar smart. This isn't smart. And the town should have control and say on how and where solar happens.
You don't disagree with it, Charlie, but while you're up...
Yeah.
I think you're well-versed in this Cold River decision about the solar farm near Rutland. Could you talk to us?
Oh, why not? No, I'm not.
You're not? Okay. As I understand it, it's a big 2.3-megawatt system that the Public Service Board said that the town's regulations were too strict and too specific about not wanting that big a solar, so they threw that out. And usually they tell towns, "You're not specific." They encourage more specificity, and it's five times this size. So, yeah, we don't disagree that we'd love to be able to have all this control and say, but as I understand it, during the 45-day comment period, Reed, I know you're well-versed in this, too. The only people we can write to is the developer, and we can, of course, copy the Public Service Board for all the good that would do, but we have to do that anyways, just because it's a smart thing to do. It's completely bonkers, yes.
Yes, and that's, I mean, so you should object to it.
Sure, we can tell him we object to it. What can he do with it?
And you should tell the Public Service Board to object to it. And I believe, I believe we may get to a point where there's actually, an appeal can be made.
Not without an attorney. I mean, I'm comfortable doing a lot, but this law, it's so bonkers, if this law were on to do anything about the motion to intervene, that would require a specialist attorney.
Okay, well, I think we'd be very disappointed if the Select Board didn't take, if the town didn't take a strong position on this.
I have to agree with Charlie. I mean, somebody, no matter how small they are, has to stand up to the state of Vermont. I mean, it's, it's not a very good quality piece of land. It's wet, but you know what? It's open. There's a farmer making two cuts of hay on it, okay? It's agricultural. It's open, working landscape. That's what brings people here to Woodstock, is open, working landscape. That's what they come to see. They come to see that, they come to see the beautiful town. It's on the way into our beautiful village. It makes a difference. If they want to see a solar farm, they can stay in Connecticut or Massachusetts. They're all over the place. Somebody has got to stand up to the state of Vermont at some point.
This project is also on a scenic byway, so...
So we have a letter, right, that you drafted?
Yeah, I drafted. It's the first draft. I learned some things tonight, and I would revise the letter a little bit.
But we send it to Mr. Garden, and then we can also send it to the...
And you have a 45-day window. Do any, oh, can I just ask a question? I'm sure Greg will...
Yeah, just a comment. The 45-day window is the preliminary application that he puts in, and that is to Mr. Garden. And then there's the 21-day formal application where you really do have a say and objection. As I said to, I think, Michael today, I said, "We have say, but not sway," because of what things are going. But it's that 21-day where a really specific, and that goes to the PSB.
Thank you for the clarification. Do you know if any neighbors automatically get any kind of a priority status?
Yes. Well, can I, can I speak for a minute? You folks, everything they've said, I fully agree with, and we can talk all we want about how we don't want this and how we all know the reasons why. However, the town, the municipalities have a very heavy and weigh in heavily on this issue with the Public Service Board. Their hearing, that hopefully we'll get to that after 45 days, as was just stated, will happen. And what happens if that hearing is held just like a courtroom? The town has the option to intervene through their attorney. I'd be happy to contribute to that also for the town of Tassville. I believe we need an attorney on the town's behalf and on the butters' behalf, which I'd be happy to contribute to also, because I've been up there and I've walked, and if I were you in your home, I'd be devastated, because I see what's going to happen to your backyard. I am devastated over this happening on Butternut Lane. I own two properties in Tassville. I'm a heavy taxpayer to this town. And not even to mention the value of properties, being that I'm a broker of 25 years. I don't even want to go down that road. But the town, the road I want to go down here tonight, as you folks can weigh in heavily with the Public Service Board. I've read their entire website, every word on it many times. They have 25 criteria by which they make decisions. The towns can weigh in. It has to be strong, it has to be effective, and it has to come from an attorney filing an appearance for this hearing. It's a very important hearing, and we have a lot that we can say. The public won't have a chance to speak as we are here freely, but what will happen is every butter will have the ability to present their case through their attorney, which I think that has to be done that way, and I really recommend a town win petition, but that's another story. That's my, that's my say. Thank you.
And can I just want one more comment? We are in the process of trying to organize a meeting next Thursday on the 28th, and we have invited our legislators to that meeting. I have gotten the okay from two of the four who will be there, Allison Clarkson and Dick McCormick. I'm waiting to hear from John Campbell and Alice Nidka. We would be happy to invite you, the Tassville people, sort of, some of them are just hearing this for the first time because it just started this morning. But we are planning a meeting because we want barrier on this whole situation, because this is, as has been said, this is Tassville now, right now, it's Tassville, Woodstock right now, but it's our state.
Let me just add, Mr. Garden now has three projects on the, I guess, actually, on the table, applications in. This is the smallest of the three. This is the least important to him. And I think our, my biggest hope is that it's such a pain to him that he just goes away and says, "This isn't worth it." You know, these bigger ones are, and that's one of the reasons we want to get the legislators involved. I think if he thought that the Senator Pro Tem, you know, in Vermont was not particularly pleased with a project of his, he might likely just say, "You know, this isn't worth it because I've got bigger fish to fry." And of the three that are, the applications are in now, I'm sure he's got a lot of other ones that he'd like to put in. So that's really what, what we wanted to, is have, have that pressure and keep that pressure on. And I think the easiest solution would be to have him just decide Woodstock is not, not worth bothering with and go on to his bigger, you know, two-megawatt facilities and, and then we have other plans for the, some way to preserve that property if that happens, if we have the ability to, so. if, if that happens, if we have the, the ability to, so.
Do you know if he's actually bought the land?
Under contract.
That's logical, I didn't know.
What about the bridge question?
The, I don't know, I, I think that it's, it's not a bad bridge, it's got a full six-inch concrete deck in its shore.
Phil, they'll tell you it doesn't matter because the current project, the first phase he's talking about, and so they're not even looking at Phase Two, and the first phase doesn't involve Butternut Lane. So that bridge doesn't even come in that question. It wouldn't until the second phase, which will be another fast track because it's only 500 kilowatt.
Are you sure they don't look at the cumulative effect on a piece of property?
They're, according to their, according to their rules, you, you cannot develop two 500-kilowatt on the same property. So what he will do is subdivide the property, right? And then build his second 500-kilowatt and access it from Butternut Lane. He's not a dummy, and that's, that's, he's thought this all out. That's, that's what's going to happen.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay. Next step, we...
Next step, I'll, I'll make a stronger letter and include some more things like what Reed, Charlie, and Barbara said. Call you, come in and sign it. I guess if you have a motion to sign it when it's ready, on, on an outline of what you see in your package.
I'll have her see here.
Phil, it's important that the town puts in an intervention. They have to file an appearance when that hearing happens, that's critical. Other than letters, it has to go beyond that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table once we, um, refine the letter that Phil has, we'll work on a little bit stronger, that we will sign it.
Do you want to set a meeting to sign it? Some, some odd, random time, whether it be the beginning of the workday or at the end of the workday?
What timeframe are you talking about?
Anything's fine for me. What, it's Tuesday? Where's, when is the deadline for the, for this forty-five days?
Uh, I think it's the fifteenth of June.
June 12th, I think, or 11th. For the forty-five, and then that starts to...
We have plenty of time, may I say?
Phil, that starts to 21, and June 11th.
You won't have another meeting before this.
Not before that deadline, but ruled before any intervening status.
The intervening status, that's correct.
We'll have another meeting before that.
That's correct, you'll be within the 21 days at that point. Now, did anybody in this room actually receive the application mailed to them because they're in the butter?
Yes.
And the Planning Commission has it also.
Yep, okay.
He's calling it a Woodstock community garden, and that is the fastest of the two. When you read his application, it's, it's incorrect.
Thank you.
So do we want to, we... How do we do the motion? Is that just that we'll, we'll sign it or meet?
I think we just need to meet, I don't think we need to have a motion that we're going to sign something until we know what...
Till we know what we're signing.
Till we know what we're signing.
So we can set something up when we get it ready and circulate it, ask for your comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bruce, you withdraw your motion?
Yes.
You withdraw your motion?
Yes.
So we can work on the stronger language.
Are you setting meeting dates tonight?
No, I'll, I'll, when I get it done, I'll circulate it, and then see who can come in.
Okay, guys, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Surely do what we can.
Thank you.
Phil, thank you.
Oh, that was good.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you for reminding.
Okay, we'll go back to old business, Economic Development Commission, Charlie.
It's just like a town meeting, it makes it much more easy.
Okay. Alan, be...
After everybody leaves.
Okay. Yeah.
Go ahead, Chair.
Yeah. So the time is upon us, uh, the 1% options tax on rooms, meals, and alcohol takes effect July 1st. And the first step in getting ready for that, or one of the many steps, is to reconstitute the EDC, the Economic Development Commission. So I had met with Phil, and we had talked about the process of doing that and trying to put out an advertisement for it, solicit new membership, so that we have a new board that constitutes the Woodstock Economic Development Commission. Part of that was also the concept of having economic, or Community and Economic Development Council, which is, there's a lot of people that were very interested in following this and participating, but they didn't want to necessarily participate on a management level, management meeting. Do, they want to be involved with managing a public relations firm, or AdWords campaigns, or doing that kind of stuff. Instead, they wanted to have input into the process, hear what was going on, and give their feedback. So creating this council of interested members, because it obviously didn't pass by landslide either, we're talking nine votes, and that's a way to really increase the amount of information out in the community. So that would be really advisory to the Economic Development Commission, and the Economic Development Commission would be promoting ideas and concepts to the, to the Select Board. So that's kind of where we are, is really trying to reconstitute the EDC. I've put together what I thought was an application or something that you could consider. It looks like we've got copies of it. I printed them out in case, or additional copies. It's things that people could fill out, saying, "I'm interested in serving on the board." And then it would be up to the Select Board really to review them, and then make additional appointments.
Are you looking for a total of five?
Five, I talked to one of the existing members of the EDC, Charlie Shackleton. He was interested in continuing on serving. I think you and I talked about the concept, but let's, let's just start fresh. Um, and there's something to be said for continuity, so possibly five to seven is the maximum number. But really, anything larger than that is, becomes unworkable.
So you're, if you could wave a magic wand, everybody that's currently sitting who's interested in continuing would apply, just as somebody who's green and new to the thing.
Right, yeah. And then...
I believe when, when the EDC was created, there was no term limits, there was no, there was an unlimited unspecified term.
That's true. And then as part of our deliberations, we decided that some people serve a one-year term, a two-year term, or a three-year term. And then, really what happened is that as people got involved with other things, they started dropping off. And, and when we came, was it two years ago, with the initiative to fund a part-time economic development coordinator, when that got defeated, then the interest level was still even lower, so they became dormant. Who was still serving in official capacity then said, "I'm done." So that's really why we're down to two. The, the timeframe is such that if the tax takes effect on July 1st, then revenues start being collected in the third quarter. And before any monies are received, it's very important to have established what the plan is for the money. So the EDC would have to really come up with that plan and come back to the Select Board to say, "Here's the plan that we've got." So it's an active time between now and, say, October 1st, that group has to meet and come up with those plans for your approval. So what I'm hoping is that, I didn't know about the June, uh, May 28th meeting, was to have an informational meeting next week of people that may be interested in either serving on the Community and Economic Development Council, again, advisory of the EDC, or volunteering on the EDC. To say, "This is what we're thinking about, we'd really like to invite people's comments, but who really wants to serve on the board?" And then they would fill out applications if they're interested in serving on the board, submit those for your review, and then, as in the past, you've interviewed people as to their level of interest, and then made decisions in appointing people to the, to the board. I don't know if, if other commissions have a one, two, three-year terms when they start out. Is that set up that way, like with the Billings Park Commission?
I'm not sure of the Billings Park Commission. The Planning Commission certainly is.
Yeah.
And then they become all three years, staggered.
Yeah, so that probably makes the most sense, to do something like that.
So you go, your start is an advertisement?
Yes, yeah, and to get the word out through various media. I think it'd be pretty easy to get word out through different email blasts and posts even on the community listserv on Channel 8.
Thank you, Charles.
To get information out. There, there are people that are pretty passionate about whether they support it or did not support this particular initiative, so there will be some interest that would be quickly garnered, I think, in serving on one or two of the boards.
That sounds like a good way to go about it. Do you need a motion from us?
I don't know, except for your participation, and you're going to be reviewing the applications. And you may want to be, if you want, are interested in coming to the meeting. So, again, there's a lot of demands on your time, so I'm not going to suggest that you should.
Excuse me, Charlie, when are you having meetings?
My idea is to have it next Thursday on the 28th.
It's a busy day.
It's a busy day, there are always competing interests. And if it's a really nice day, it'll be hard to get people to come, because we've been waiting for summer for so long. But it would be also to make this available, the application available, not say you had to come to a meeting to find out about it so that people could fill out the application. Maybe that could be available at the town offices. And the question is, when would they be due? And then when would you review them? And do you have to have a meeting to review the people that are interested in serving? That seems like it would be June. Pick a time in June when you could do that, and then to appoint that group so they start actually meeting in July.
Does she have a comment?
I, my comment would be, could it be on the town website so people could just download it and, and access it?
Yeah, good idea.
Sure, this form that I basically borrowed from another template that was available on the internet, because I, could be used for other boards or commissions for the town. It just seemed like it was generic enough so it could be for the EDC, but it could be for any other boards or commissions you want to appoint people to.
Sounds good to me.
So should we set a time then, to meet in June for reviewing applicants?
For who?
Uh, there's the vote.
There's the vote. June, June 9th, we're here at 6:30.
We don't know how many do.
We don't.
Well, you follow me just your regular meeting.
Yeah.
Do it at the next, at the June meeting? Or just see what you have by...
I would say that you could probably sort through them that night if you wanted to sort through them on the preceding week and decide who to interview the following week. You might want to do that.
Do we anticipate a whole bundle?
The last time with all the publicity, I think we had twenty people apply to serve on the Economic Development Commission, 2009.
We did?
Yeah. So that was a lot. I don't know how many would apply now. It's now out of the headlines, so there's not as much attention pressed to it. Summer diverts people's interest.
But there is money attached to it now.
There is money attached to it now. So a number of people have expressed interest to me in serving on the commission. But that's great, you have to be appointed by the Select Board, so...
Well, we'll just have to play itself out. You're not going to have any money, as you said, until at least the following quarter.
Right.
So advertise, see what you get.
See what you get.
Yeah. If you have a bundle by the ninth, maybe we can look at some of them then and, and plan to do a fuller evaluation on the next meeting. Does that make sense?
I'll be tied up in the trustees meeting that night starting at seven. On that, yeah. So then you meet the following week, a little...
Who should we have receive the interested applications?
Those who come here.
Come right here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll set them aside. You check with me, come by and pick them up. I'll set them in, in a box or folder, depending on how many you get.
Okay.
I'll set them aside for you.
All right. I'll just keep track of it.
Put your basket.
The basket, you get your own basket?
I get a basket?
You might get a basket, you never know.
It'll be a plastic letter, don't get it spiced.
Oh, God.
It won't be, it won't be handled open.
It's the marketing shirt.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
Thanks. Just about to start.
No, it's only just beginning. Okay, um, we did citizens' comments, but Alan, would you like to, are you here for a... Seeing as we're bouncing around tonight?
What up?
Before we get to...
It's our whole chair. So as you know, or, I don't know, we're in the market for purchasing units this, this year. So I was working with a couple different Amels dealers that sell these things. To be honest with you, we've really got it down to two. So I got here, so I made enough copies for everybody, I think. This is from Osage. This is a company that's been selling Amels in Vermont recently. Hartford actually bought their last one from them. Excuse me, and it's from Cromwell Emergency Vehicle. The deal on it is it's an Osage box. Uh, there's a lot of stuff in there, probably the bottom line, you want to see is at the end of it. That's probably where you want to store it. Here's the bottom line.
There is one?
There is one, way at the end.
Way at the end.
They, they go from lights to blinker switches, whatever you want.
Wow, I use all that stuff.
So what do I got, second page from the end? Second page from the end.
But we get a discount.
Oh, I use the, yeah, there are discounts, but, uh, for this particular box, now this is, um, this is also, so let you know, traditionally, we've always bought diesel, and most places have. This here is for a gas chassis. So back when Amels started, we had gas, and what would happen? We'd put all the lights in them, all the flashlights, radios and stuff in them, and they just couldn't keep up, and they'd burn off. So they switched to diesel.
This is nationwide, not, not just...
Right, just here.
Uh, so now, with LED lights and everything kind of conservative, they're, they're going back to gas. I've talked to three different large Amels services in Massachusetts that are using, they're switching all their stuff to gas, naturally, because it's cheaper to maintain, cheaper on fuel, obviously. You, you probably can't go 300,000 miles with them like you can a diesel, however, when we're trying to trade it now, so we've got 102,000 miles on it. But it's a good 10,000 to $12,000 savings going with the gas. And by doing that also, you can get the bigger box, so there's more room inside with a cushier ride. You get the LED lights. And this also has the backup camera, so hopefully we stop running into things when we're going backwards. Happens once in a while. It will aid in that anyways. Uh, there's a hydraulic lift that takes the oxygen cylinder, which is about five feet tall, about this big round steel. A lot of the employees at Woodstock Amels can't lift it in and out, that's only a few of us that can, so... And then it's a back braking job as it is, so this has a hydraulic lift where you just roll this thing into place, strap it in, push a button, and it throws it in the compartment for you. What else do I have on? Is there other fancy stuff I had in here? But anyways, that's, that's the breakdown of, uh, this, this would work well for us for another fifteen or twenty years out of gas.
And why would this last longer than anything else that we have in our fleet?
Well, the one we have now is fifteen years old.
The oldest one?
The oldest one, the one we bought fourteen, sorry, fourteen years old. And it's doing well since it was a small box when they bought it, you know, looking for the cheapest, what can you get out of the cheaper way? It's a very small box. Uh, you can only work on a patient on one side, so this is, this is a bigger box. It'll last the same timeframe.
This has the patient in the middle?
This has a patient in the middle. There is a, a slightly cheaper one, this is from a different company, pretty much the same Amels. The only difference is my, my feeling on it. If I remember, there's only a $4,000 or $5,000 difference on it. The salesperson for the Osage has been top-notch, right on me all the time, telling me updates, and just keeping me up to line and getting me whatever I need to have. This other guy, I got to chase him down a little bit.
What's the box like on the specialty vehicles?
They're about the same. Now, they'll tell you that they're constructed slightly different, and the Cromwell guy beats his up a lot more, he says, but...
So what, did you notice what the weight was on them both?
Um, the weight, the total weight overall? I don't know that I have that.
Should be here somewhere, but I forget.
You would have the, uh...
I was focused on them.
It's got everything.
Yeah, there's so much. I sat down with this guy from Osage the other day, we just went through line to line. I don't remember, there is a close vehicle, we... You guys can ask me something, I didn't know anything.
Now, what, is it the next, next one that the box is going to get converted?
Correct, so our ambulance two, which is a four-wheel drive, that one was purchased with the intent of switching the box, so just changing chassis out from under.
Is this aluminum? Are these aluminum or steel?
These are aluminum.
These are aluminum. So that one is in aluminum, so is this box transferable also?
Yeah, look at the, somewhere here, where was my paperwork? At the end, you could, maybe it's not in here, just be talking to him. You could switch out the box, you send it back to Cromwell, buy a new chassis, switch out the box, and they'll guarantee the box for the same time, once they do inspection and repair, whatever needs to be repaired. So that is an option.
Not giving too much trade in, are they?
No. A portion of 14-year-old ambulance isn't worth much. I know if you buy them for $150,000, it'll get $3,000. And both of these say the same thing. One thing they did recommend is you try to sell it outright, maybe you get $8,000 or $9,000. I don't know, our ambulance salesperson, so...
The highway department sure likes the old ambulance we have. That was converted from the Southwest Dunkin' for a while, and we had, and it's got a little wood platform body on it, for this kind of money.
They show the weight for the Chevy, but now I don't see it in Ford.
This is a two-wheel drive.
This is a two-wheel drive van front.
I would just get an idea of what went into it, because they are slightly different, it would show up in the weight.
Yeah. And the other thing with diesel, Ford has gone away from doing a diesel with a van front. There's some conflict between Ford and who made the transmission for that motor. So they had problems with it. Ford blamed the person, I think it was Allison, the transmission. Ford blamed Allison, Allison blamed Ford, so in the end, Ford said, you know what, we just aren't going to do it anymore. So they'll make a diesel, but they're doing it in a truck chassis rather than a van chassis. So if you wanted it, you got to go to a truck chassis, which brings the price up also.
Could you look at page 14, top?
Which one are you on? Humol's?
I'm on the Osage ambulance. Brave and warrior order for. So up at the top, you have this 168 inches and 148 inches. Where 20 inches different, I'm curious.
Yeah, and ours is the, I believe it's the longer one.
The Super Warrior?
Super Warrior, yeah.
Why would it say that?
On the first, page two of the balance sheet. That's the $101,000 for the box itself. Oh, sorry, this is Chevy, standard. Below that, $33,000. Super Warrior three, 8450 gas. So the Super Warrior is 168. I looked at going to the truck chassis, but to do that with the weight, we had to go to a smaller box, and honestly, that'd be the only one I could stand up in.
No, I wouldn't do that.
I didn't want to trade, I didn't want to trade space for a truck. The vans actually ride much better than the truck chassis do anyway, they're much smoother to ride. Truck chassis obviously are a little rougher. If you want with a diesel, I had a quote here just for diesel, and diesel for approximately the same stuff on a Chevy chassis is $172,595. What do we have in the budget for that?
I think we're right around $150,000.
And then we get more come July 1.
That includes what you get July 1. It's hard to budget these things. In the past, we've been fortunate to buy a demo with a few thousand miles on them, and
I don't know if this is a lot to do. This is kind of blueprints of the whole thing, inside and outside, then. Putting more lights on the front, flashlights on the back, LEDs, scene lights on the side.
Did you have an ambulance committee, or you do this yourself?
I did it myself. They did come and show us ambulances, and everybody was invited to come check them out and give their input, and that's, I kind of took a little bit of everything and put it in here. Some things obviously have to discard, but...
What did, so did your people see both of these?
Yeah.
And what did they think to that?
As long as they get the little details in the box, they didn't really seem to mind gas or the diesel, or the truck or the van. Honestly, they like vans.
They were looking at room.
So both of them are the same?
The room, the comfort, and having stuff. Our ambulance three is set up, everybody loves the way our ambulance three is set up, which is our newest one, I think it's 2010? That's our newest one, everybody likes that setup, with a few minor changes, but it's pretty much done here. It's a very similar setup to our ambulance three.
So is the specialty a Super Warrior also?
Reason in specialty, yeah.
The other bit?
The other one?
Oh, specialty vehicles. I don't know if they call it the same or not. It's similar, very similar. They call them victory mine.
Okay, let's see how long this one is. Does your spec say that it would be that long?
It's 167 by 96. Is that the same?
168.
Within reason by one inch, sure. Good, thank you.
Yeah, I remember, these are very similar, you know, I mean, the companies will tell you how they build them, it's not apples to apples. Cromwell says it's all solid construction, there's no seams, you don't get any rust, you don't get any corrosion that way, stronger box than the rollover, specialty vehicles doesn't say all that stuff, but...
And they're both aluminum.
They're both aluminum.
Well, your drivers don't roll vehicles, do they?
No, we don't. Really pushed, Cromwell was really pushing the safety. What they also have in there is, they've designed the inside so the boxes, the compartments are right here, so if you're on one side of the ambulance, you don't have to go to the other side to grab something. We can almost duplicate one side from the other side, so... Right now, you need something, sometimes you have to get up, walk around in the patient as you're going down the road, grab something on the other side. Or here, you should be able to get everything from one side, either side. That's how Cromwell's designed this thing to work. They got a seatbelt system in there, so if you're a care attendant and the seatbelted in, they can slide from one end of the seat down to the other end of the seat and still be secured in. I don't remember that, I don't believe SBI has it. Again, the Cromwell guy was going over the stuff, very in detail with me. The other thing starts, and I feel, you and I had a slight conversation about this, in July 1, Vermont follows what is called a KKK spec. It's just a specification for safety in an ambulance, so effective July 1, if you order it after July 1, you have to have one of two methods to hold your cots in place. Currently, the antlers, I have a picture of antlers, I think it was in... In this here, I have a picture, you can see what I'm talking about. There are the things that hold the cot in place on the floor.
That last page, that last page?
Yeah, it's always the last page, right? Yeah, you see why we call them antlers. So the cot just kind of slides into this antler thing, and then snaps in here, and that's what holds it in place. According to new KKK specs, which Vermont follows, that is not going to be the standard. So in 2001, you've got two options. You can go to a Ferno model, and all I can get on that, I looked at the video, there's a great video on it, but all it has is like a track in the center, and there's two pins, you have to buy a Ferno cot, which we don't have, which is, of course, right? So you buy the cot, the pins, they slide into this one track, and it slides into place. It's about $2,000, $2,500 for that. You go to the plus the cot, that we don't have. If you go to the striker, which we do have, they offer this power load thing, which is $24,000. Quite a big difference. But people that have strikers don't want to go and now toss all their strikers that they bought for $15,000, $16,000 each, and start buying Fernos for the same money.
Do you use your strikers? You've got a couple of strikers.
All strikers.
Powerless. But then they work with your antler clip?
Yes. But any ambulance ordered after July 1 is required to have one of these two ways of securing it.
So then all your, okay. Well, none of your cots really transfer from ambulance to ambulance?
Yes, they do. We can do that.
But do you do it? So when you eventually have to start going with this new system, the new ambulance is what, have a dedicated cot?
Uh, no, I believe this power lift, what happens is two little arms that come out, whether or not, and it grabs onto the stretcher and actually picks it up, so you hardly, you don't do any work.
Like a forklift.
Like a forklift. It's a big fancy expensive thing. I know Hartford's buying one, they're going to put it in here, so we'll see how it works. But that's an added cost, so if we can order it before...
Well, it seems like we need to do that.
We can avoid that till this time in the ambulance. Till the next one. We'll have to budget accordingly for that.
Is that a gas one you're trading in?
No.
Diesel's being traded.
Diesel's being traded.
Gas being bought. I see, it's a V10. I've heard some awful horror stories about that. V10s. Yeah. But we'll check and see if it's possible to get the V8. We'll check and see if it's possible to order it with a V8 engine, just like highway.
A V8 is a good engine, but they've got a lot of aluminum, a lot of manifold problems. Something like that with a V10. It's expensive thing, too, you know. It's more complex, two more cylinders on it makes quite...
I can ask about.
If it's possible, John, we can certainly do that. If it's possible, and it fits in that space.
Yeah.
Because we don't know that that V8 is available for that ambulance, because of the size of the engine.
We don't want diesel either.
Like to avoid the diesel and all those expenses.
Sounds like it.
And Chevy still makes a diesel, so you can go to a Chevy van front. What I'm hearing is they just don't keep, it doesn't keep up with the wear and tear. The ball joints and the front ends being beat up horrible on the board.
Woodstock gets a fleet discount from Ford that we do not get from anyone else.
That's correct.
And it adds up to a lot of money every time we buy a vehicle that they sell. I'd like the possibility to investigate it. Yes, I will. But if it only comes in a V10?
Yeah.
That'd be stuck.
That's, yeah, stuck.
I was looking to see if there was an option on this.
They must have an option.
Your recommendation is to Cromwell?
That's my recommendation, yes.
And I think I will make a motion to go ahead with your recommendation, and suggest that we follow the, I'll check the, pursue the Cromwell Emergency Vehicles bid for an Osage ambulance, and you'll check on whether you can get it.
If we can get a V8 engine, we will, and it may adjust the money. If it's available, we will get it.
Do you need a dollar in the motion?
No, I think you've got enough detail.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? John, you're happy?
No, I guess I had them.
Kind of happy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, great, Alan can...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, well, good presentation.
Yeah. Lots of...
Oh, there's a lot.
Lots of research. Keeping up with everybody's credentials.
Thank you, we're all studying that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. We can go on to review proposals for elevator runway.
Okay, they came in, they're actually still out to bid, because they're revising the roof from a copper standing seam to a metal standing seam. And that should drive the price down a little. You still got, I believe your low bid is right around $100,000, which is ripe construction. Then they go up drastically from there.
What was the reason for the copper roof in the first?
I don't know. I know they'll last longer.
Oh, well, yeah, they don't rust out.
The other building is galvanized paint.
You get some ease off of it, and sometimes that causes erosion on that roof. That's probably why they specified it.
Is it in a stone?
Yeah, and it may actually be to, from the elevator foyer, from all I know, that might have a copper roof on it.
Which you can see from where?
Exactly, you can't see it. No, I think, so it's going to go back, and the prices will come back. We don't have, well, I tried to get ahold of Ingrid today to find out how much of this proposal we can put off until next year, and how much of it. For example, the door, the concrete pad under the door that won't frost heave. Things like that.
Other than these.
Yeah, that's eligible next year for a 50% state grant. So I would want to put that off anyway, I just don't know how much it's going to reduce it. Given that there's such a range in those bids, it's $100,000, I think the high one is $189,000. I would hate to gamble, put this out to bid again next year.
I would say that contractor doesn't really want the job.
Yeah, it's a lot of work to bid these, so why would you even bid it? Right Construction is a good company. They did the demolition of the half of the Tassel Bridge that we saved. Good quality company. Thank you, Mary.
There's a lot of excavations, I'd say.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
We took a lot of that out.
Took a lot of it out, can't get away with it.
We're going to have to.
We'll have to.
The drainage and things is what's... So we'll have revised numbers, as I understand it.
So you don't need any...
Well, I would like to act, Alan, I want to warn you that we don't have this kind of money, and I bet you we're expecting to spend around $70,000 instead of $100,000, but that seems to be the going trend on construction. What I'd like to do is put, when we get the final numbers, put a financing package together for your consideration. When you look at this, I don't want Wright coming back next year saying, well, I always left a lot of money on the table. I'll work up, get the final numbers and work up a financing package that you consider.
Next meeting?
Next meeting, or maybe when you come in to sign the letter.
Okay.
Just want to warn a quick meeting.
Okay.
Have an agenda published that people can follow, if they want to come in and...
All right.
A thought, just dropping back to that discussion about the solar firm. We know what our limitations are, as far as what we can do. Should we be a little bit ahead of the game, just investigating with a law firm, as to what that process could cost?
Sure. Should now probably be one of the bigger municipal firms like Stitzel, Fletcher, and Page from Burlington, or there's others. I'd like to find somebody who's had experience doing this.
They've talked, Tesla, talked with somebody, there's some environmental attorney that they've...
I don't want to pay somebody, it would be very expensive to pay somebody to learn the ropes.
Yeah.
And somebody's already learned the ropes.
But that next time around, it would be good for us to have some idea of what that involves.
Well, I think, I got, the village got tangled up before the Public Service Board quite a while ago over the decorative streetlights. And where you lose all your money is with the continuances. Everybody's all happy to continue for nothing much. It's just a money machine. But I don't think that's going to happen with this Public Service Board hearing, because it's all about being expedited. I don't think that'll be an issue. But boy, did that drag down for years. Yeah, I'll do that, that's a good idea, finding out who's got some experience.
Just so we have more. The more info, the better.
There's our fellow Chris Sargent at the Two Rivers Out Blue Planting Commission is pretty well versed, he may have a recommendation.
Okay. Westerdale Road?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we've found out that the mileage on the state map is correct, but some of it is going to be converted from a class three to a pent road when you do your mileage certificate next year.
The top of it?
The top.
It's not a very long stretch.
It's like .07 miles, I think.
Yep.
So, that's, that's how that turned out. It, uh, it turned out to have been fairly complicated happenings in 1959 with, I guess it was Robinson showed up to the hearing saying that he owns some land that would be landlocked if they discontinued it, so they pent-roded some of it, which made the, the record confusing because they didn't give you that history. But Tom Decker Bush and his mom remembered a lot of this, so they were helpful. Can you see the letter from the state guy? We don't, it doesn't go away from ancient roads because the mileage is on the map.
Okay.
So we don't have to do anything except remember to change the mileage next February.
Okay. Bridge 51. Over the Kedron Brook, that's the one by the post office.
That's correct. So this is the...
Just the...
Follow-up of the hearing you had last month. And these are comments, they need this back in order to get moving on schedule since you essentially agreed to, to close the bridge, work on...
Rapid construction.
...map rapid bridge construction and leave your closure of all traffic for three weeks, and then there'll be some one lane alternate route, alternate...
That's the only way to go.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Probably like to say.
Yep.
So that does need to be signed to move this bridge design forward.
So do we need a motion to sign it?
Yes.
The D F D tour, ain't no big excessive either.
Right.
No, no, so...
Okay. Do I have a motion to sign the Woodstock Village Bridge?
Yeah.
John, you want to make a motion to sign this so we can...
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to go ahead and sign the first part of our bridge project. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do you have a...
I do. I do, and I corrected the word preservation in the first line, so that...
I wasn't gonna bring that up, Mary.
Well, I, I found it about two minutes after the...
Are we still in the Woodstock Village Select Board?
No, you're not the Village Select Board, you'll see there's a line through that.
Yeah. It's the X marks the spot. Does John have the overweight truck?
Oh, oh, he hasn't had them though.
Oh-ho.
How do you like that?
We can go on to...
He's thick ass, good. She fixed it.
She fixed it.
She fixed it, yeah.
So, John, Mary's bringing you the truck permits. So we'll go on to the bids for the audit services. Is that all right, Phil?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Mary.
Sorry.
So Mudgeet and has done our before, so we just have to do the...
Yeah, he's giving you about way more hours than anybody else. It's the low bid, I think, low balling on hours, I don't think that's enough hours to do a quality job for town and village and sewer district, et cetera, et cetera, and all of our...
He's certainly familiar with the village-town problem.
Right. Seems to be fair money.
Yep. So you recommend accepting Mudgeet, Janet, and Crowe Weisner?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion's made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to stay with our present auditors. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vermont 100, usual?
Yes.
Endurance Ride?
We've never had any problems with that.
We've never had.
No.
July 18 and 19.
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Vermont 100 endurance ride application. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Wow, see, now we've got roadside mowing.
Yes, we have two proposals for roadside mowing. We have a local firm that's been doing it, and another firm from Chester called Orchid that is considerably lower. Ken talked to Fullerton about his mowers, and I talked to Orchid today. And John and I reviewed these. And while we hate to leave town, I like to give local business to a local property owner, property tax payer.
It's quite a change.
Almost $1,000 spread per year's a lot of money.
Yep. I'm surprised you only got two proposals.
Yeah. I don't know, it's, uh...
We sent out more, we sent out four or five.
Yeah, no, I'm just surprised.
We only got two back.
Request.
So, what's our...
Why do, why do you have a year and a three-year, when there's no, there's no three-year discount?
It's, it's just, it's, well, the reason for that is that sometimes the guys have to buy new equipment. And if they could lock themselves into a three-year contract, they know they can pay for the equipment.
Okay.
Whereas if you do for one, and they don't get it next year, then they've got payments to make, the machine may not be able to work.
Okay, that makes sense.
What's the board's pleasure?
Is this sort of in line with what we've been paying in the past?
The 15 is in line, the 19 is a jump.
Yeah, okay.
And it has stayed in town, it has gone out of town, it fluctuates based on the bids.
On the bids.
Yeah, okay. I would make a motion that we contract with Fortune at 15, 250.
Where's this other fellow from? I believe Chester.
Chester.
Motion's been made to accept the low bid?
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Want to do the one year or the three?
We need to designate that.
Why not do the three?
I think so, lock it in.
Keep it from going up every year.
Okay.
Yeah, that's your advantage, there's no discount, but you're not getting an increase.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which could be $4,000.
Right.
So now that we've saved some money, we can go on to the board of sewers?
Right.
And manhole cover replacements.
I want you to turn to the photos in, in the pack attached to this. John went out with us and we got a up close virtual inspection who lowered him down and checked the quality of the mortar.
Upside down?
Well, the process, rather than digging up the street to rebuild a 16-foot deep sewer brick manhole.
You don't have that picture?
Which one are you missing on?
Who's missing the brick one?
You don't hear?
This one's hard to, whatever that is.
So the process they do to transform these manholes is spray a slurry of concrete reinforced with fiberglass.
Oh, so this is like a before and after?
Before and after.
Okay.
And you got a lot of holes and a lot of, the mortar's just worn out.
That's before, okay, we'll do after.
And the issues go deep.
It makes it even more exciting, Macy, for your... Looks like a worm after.
So there's, there's two parts to fixing a manhole. There's the part of fixing the brick...
And what's the frame?
Manhole, it's the tall cylinder, and then the other's the, the frame and grate.
So we have nine of these?
They need work, yes. You've got hundreds all together.
Hundreds, I know.
Maybe even...
There's only nine?
Many hundreds.
Seems like you're rebuilding those every year.
There is a lot of work. They, they, they take a big pounding on Route 4. Get off Route 4 and they last a lot longer. So the work, the expense of replacing the top comes in having to put a steel plate over the manhole while number one, the concrete cures when it's being set, and then when you pave it, while your asphalt gets set, so it doesn't get pounded down while it's still warm. And that adds a lot of expense, but it's, it's necessary expense. So the total project cost is $30,966.12. Now, I will say that I invited about 10 contractors to a pre-bid conference to walk around. I got zero. So then I reached out to this Twin State Utilities, because they were doing some work fixing...
Telephone company, guys?
For the telephone company. They do the Green Mountain Power, they do the Fair Point. They've done some work for the village. They do quality work and done... As, as you drive through Route 4, you hit these manholes, you go kaboom.
Oh, I know, fizzle up, yeah. So these are all on, these nine right now are on Route 4?
One of them is in South Woodstock. But eight of them are Route 4.
And they're in the village? They're in the village? They're like bridges, we take care of manholes?
Yes, exactly.
It's our sewer system.
It's our sewer system, that's true.
But the Vermont Pipeline is a quality company, I guess they're doing 600 of these in Newton, Mass. right now, just with this concrete fiberglass liner.
Green Mountain Pipeline is down in Massachusetts?
They work, they do most of the work out of state. They do, percentage-wise, most of their business is out of state with the bigger systems.
So you need a motion to go ahead?
Yes.
Except the...
Anything. Better taking them up.
Shore State Utilities?
Yes.
And Green Mountain Pipeline. So I'll make that motion, we contract with Twin State Utilities for $20,966.12 to repair nine manholes, and with Green Mountain Pipeline Services to install cement liners in those nine manholes.
I'll fill it.
Is that a second?
Is that a second, John?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of our manhole sewer fixer-uppers, please say aye.
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 Look after, just sewer business. John, how are you doing on the overweight truck permits?
I have reviewed them, and they all seem to be loyal, so I make a motion to approve them.
Okay.
Second?
Motion's made to second to... How many applications do we have?
How many?
About five or six.
Five or six, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's that time of year, we be trucking.
I think it's seven.
Okay. Okay, application for increase in sewer use on South Street?
Yes. But Troy's house, you know, always want to add a bed, reconfigure, we'll add a bedroom.
Okay. Everything?
We'll do one at a time.
It's up to you.
There's only the two?
There's only the two. So one's adding a bedroom?
The other's adding a vertical housing development.
Vertical housing.
I'll make a motion to approve both applications.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to accept the sewer applications. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sewer connection, we did that one. Okay, we're on to bids for truck purchase, more, more vehicles.
This is for the sewer department. And Ted Green Ford has always treated us well. Oh, a, a truck that they got from the highway department.
Right, I was gonna say, we keep passing it.
Four years ago or so.
Yeah, I guess so.
2010, it was.
So it's, it's, it's worn out, it's costing you more money in repairs to keep on it than to do one.
And this is also in the sewer budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Where'd it come?
Yeah.
Looks good?
Looks good, doesn't it? I think, yeah. Yep.
You're happy with that?
I think I'm happy with that, like, we gotta change the Z8.
To the V-8 engine.
Oh.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion, John?
Pardon?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it, yes.
You're our automobile person.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to accept Ted Green Ford for the sewer department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Ted Green Ford.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes.
I didn't find anything in the minutes, John, did you?
I couldn't find a thing wrong. I looked at it, too. But I was no a consultant eagle eye here for it.
She does, she does good work.
Yes, she certainly does. For the look of her stature, she really does is great. Yeah. Here we go.
I wasn't, I wasn't here on it before you first.
Oh, I know, I, I was on it this afternoon, I took you out. Took you out.
All right.
Cut, cut, cut!
Motion to accept minutes?
So moved.
Okay. John, second?
I'll, yeah.
Okay. Motion's made to accept minutes for April 21st, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, other business, we have...
Did you watch the vote on that?
Oh, well, maybe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Trying to push it along. I found one more piece of paper, oh my gosh. Other business?
Nope.
Nope.
Any business?
Nothing.
What about this?
Just FYI.
Okay.
Have expense warrants.
And expense warrants.
Move to adjourn pending the signing of the expense warrant.
Yes, now it's hard to talk. Do I have a second to adjourn?
Second.